Our companion items, one's an amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use map. And the second one is a companion item, which is a rezoning to official zoning atlas. But the first one is CPA 0240 ordinance 2021. It's a request by Carol Chadwick P. on behalf of Ashman Holdings LLC to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map classification for residential low density to highway interchange for a portion of parcel 02444-000. This is in District 3, Commissioner Hollingsworth District, and the Planning and Zoning Board held a public hearing on November 16th, 2021, and voted to recommend approval to the Board of County Commission. At the meeting, no members of the public spoke for or against. To give you the commissioners an idea, this is kind of the only piece that's actually zoned residential. It's all surrounded by highway interchange land use. So this would actually be kind of taking a non-conformity area and actually making it more conforming. The companion item is Z0603 ordinance 2021-22. It's also a request by Carol Chadwick P., agent for Ashman Holdings LLC, to amend the official zoning atlas from residential single-family two, or RSF2, to commercial highway interchange, or CHI, for the same parcel. And again, that's District 3, Commissioner Hollingsworth, and the Planning and Zoning Board held a public hearing on November 16th, 2021, and voted to recommend approval to the Board of County Commission. And that's, those two are companion items.
Okay. I now declare this open for public comment. Not seeing any, I declare this closed for public comment. This is in my district, so I'll make a motion. We approve CPA 0240 ordinance 2021-21 and Z0603 ordinance 2021-22. Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Chair, just take the vote on the comprehensive plan amendment first, and then have a vote on the zoning change.
You want to vote on both separately?
Yeah, you can have the hearing together like you did, but you need to have the votes separately.
Okay, yeah, I'm kind of confused with the here. Okay. Okay, I'm making my motion on CPA 0240. Ordinance 2021-21, correct?
Yes.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And then if you'll consider a motion on the zoning change.
I also have a motion on, I want to move that we approve Z0603 ordinance 2021-22. Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ordinance passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The third item I have for you is the first reading and first public hearing for CPA 2101, ordinance 2021-19. At the beginning, around the middle of this year, the legislative body adopted SB 496, which amended Chapter 163.3177 Florida statutes, which is the requirement for comprehensive plans. Part of that amendment to Chapter 163.3177 Florida statute requires all local jurisdictions to adopt what's called a property rights element. There are four key factors within the property rights element that the state says at minimum you have to adopt. And I'll read those to you. And they are listed in your package as well. So the first one that Florida statute said we had to add is, "In local decision-making, the county shall consider the right of a property owner to physically possess and control his or her interest in the property, including easements, leases, and/or mineral rights." Number two, "The right for a property owner to use, maintain, develop, and improve his or her property for personal use or for the use of any other person subject to state law and local ordinances." Number three, "The right for a property owner to privacy and to exclude others from the property to protect the owner's possessions and property." And lastly, "The right for a property owner to dispose of his or her property through sale or gift." And staff is proposing through this ordinance to basically adopt the minimum requirements under Florida statute, which would be those four policies within that element. And the state statute doesn't preclude you from adopting more rights for property owners, but those are the minimum. I didn't feel like it was necessary to include that. I personally don't believe as a planner, with almost 20 years' experience, that's something that should be in a comprehensive plan. But it was a state's way of, I guess, reminding certain local governments that were infringing on people's rights. We typically don't have that issue around here, but I guess some of the bigger counties and cities were going a little too far. So they made it a law now to include that in our comprehensive plan. So certainly, if this board deems it necessary to add additional rights for property owners, we can. But at this time, staff is proposing the minimum. My recommendation would be to adopt the CPA 2101 on first reading and authorize staff to transmit to the DEO and all other state agencies, unless this board sees any changes that y'all want.
Okay, I declare this open for public comment. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept first reading of CPA 2101 ordinance 2021-19.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And the last item I have for you this evening is a final plat for Cypress Lake Business Park Unit 2. It's SD 0, should be 0147, or 0194, excuse me. It's a request by NACCOMBS of North Florida Professional Services on behalf of Richard Cole and Daniel Krabs, as trustees of Cypress Lake Land Trust. Again, this is for final plat approval of Cypress Lake Business Park Unit 2. This is also in District 3, Commissioner Hollingsworth District, and the Planning and Zoning Board held a public hearing on November 16th, 2021, and recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners. And y'all may remember seeing this. The preliminary plat came before this board a few months ago.
I now declare this open for public comment. Seeing none, I declare this closed for public hearing. Public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt SD 0194.
Second. Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Joel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item for discussion and action this evening is a proposed interlocal agreement with the Columbia County School Board relating to maintenance and repair of bus drives. The Board will recall that some time ago, the proposal was made that an interlocal could be drafted up between the two agencies so that the school board, when they occasionally have situations where their buses are getting stuck or where they can't move the buses on and off private property as is necessary for the overnight storage of the buses, they don't have the ability to maintain that we do. And so they'd like to do an interlocal with us. The documents enclosed there for your review. Importantly, the school board has to initiate a request. They have to do so in writing, has to be by an authorized representative. And then they are responsible for providing us with authorization from the private property owners to perform the work. It also remains in the county's discretion whether or not to actually proceed with the work. So if they ask for something that's prohibitively expensive or outside of the public works budget, we have the ability to decline the work. But for the most part, these tend to be small projects that facilitate continuing bus operations. The school board did approve the interlocal as proposed at their last meeting, and we're asking for the board to reciprocate tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I, this is Stephen, in the right direction that takes out the guesswork whether we can or not. Speaking of, we just have a local agreement with the school board. They doing the legwork in front and presenting that driveway turnaround to us, and then we perform the work. I think that's the right direction to go in. I so move we adopt this in our local agreement with the school board.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Thank you. The next item is the National Opioids, excuse me, Settlement, Non-Litigating Subdivision Participation. Basically, what's occurred, the Board will recall, it's probably been a couple of years ago now, when some attorneys from Gainesville came in, some national attorneys, and asked for the Board to participate in this national multi-district litigation against Johnson &amp; Johnson Jansen and a couple of other opioid distributors. The Board at that time declined to participate in that litigation, as did many jurisdictions. We're not alone in that. That litigation went forward, again, involved the entire country, all 50 states. All 50 states attorneys general involved in litigation against these agencies, or excuse me, against these companies. And they have recently negotiated in the federal court a $21 billion settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson and a $5 billion settlement with the distributors, with about $22.8 billion of that payable to state and local subdivisions, which obviously would include Columbia County. The trick on this one, usually, class action settlements, you have to opt out, right? You have to say, "I don't want to participate." This one is structured in such a way that you have to opt in. And every city, every county, and every state is being asked to opt in. And depending on how many participants there are in the program, more and more money is allocated, okay? So certain thresholds of participation. And so we've been asked by the Attorney General for the state of Florida to please participate. Every other Attorney General is asking their localities and counties to participate because they're trying to drive that number up to get it over the threshold. That's the first part of it. The second part of it is, the Attorney General's Office has crafted a model agreement that we would be required to sign that basically says, "You only get to share in this money if you participate." So all the money will be distributed to the state. It'll be used by the state, but the way they're going to disperse it to the counties is through the DCF for opioid addiction programs and things like that. That's the only way this money's going to come to the county because we're under 300,000 in population. If you're over 300,000 in population, they'll give you your distributions. You can tell which counties were involved in the location, can't you? So the only way we receive any benefit from this is if we participate at this juncture. We're not obligated to participate, but the only thing we're giving up is the right to sue in our own name these companies, which the Board declined to do that two years ago. And I haven't heard anything suggesting we would want to initiate a lawsuit against Johnson &amp; Johnson. So it's my recommendation to participate, to allow the Chair to execute the documents indicating that we'll participate, again, as we expect the vast majority of local governments will do. And again, all that's doing is you're giving up your right to sue, and you are enabling yourself to participate in the statewide programs through DCF to receive opioids addiction treatment here in Columbia County.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Joel, during the, that, when that was bought before the Board, and the Board opted out not to participate, I think the reason the Board done that, we had local pharmacies say that they were going to be sued if we participated. And we did not, but it had already been litigated, and the money is sitting there. So why would we deprive the county of being part of the fruit from the lawsuit by not participating now?
I think you've kind of honed in on exactly the point. There, the only thing you're giving up is the right to go sue on your own. And again, I don't see any scenario where Columbia County decides we want to sue Johnson &amp; Johnson based on their opioid practices. So that's the only thing you're being asked to give up. And then again, that's the stick, or excuse me, that's the carrot. The stick is, if you don't participate, you don't get any of this money.
Yeah.
And the money is coming. It may be less than the full, you know, $28 billion, but it's coming. And whatever comes to Florida, the only way to participate is to engage and to allow our DCF offices to receive monies from this program. It's going to be separately administered. It's got its own Board of Trustees under this big, I included some of the documents in the pamphlet in case you wanted to review them, but I also gave you a hyperlink. There's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages you can review if you choose to. But it all basically says what I'm sharing with you this evening.
But when you spoke of the distributors in there earlier, is there potential for them to continue to sue distributors?
These distributors are above the pharmacy level, and they're specifically named. So you're specifically settling with the four or five distributors that are specifically named. Of course, none of them based in Columbia County, and Johnson &amp; Johnson, as the opioid manufacturer. There are other outfits out there. I think Purdue Pharmacy was one of them. These are the ones that have put, you know, $28 billion on the table. And the state's attorneys general, the 50 states, have agreed to this. So if they've agreed to it, it's really just a question of how much money is going to get paid out. The more local governments that participate, the more money that comes in.
So no possibility of retaliation against our pharmacies?
There should not be, no, sir. And again, I think Columbia County has decided that we're not going to do that. Again, is it possible that some, you know, other law firm decides they do want to come out and sue local pharmacies? Yes, that's within the realm of possibility, but this has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
Yeah, this would not prompt that. This would not stop that.
Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion that we accept to be a part of this lawsuit.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Chair, I'll need to borrow you in the next day or two to sign some paperwork, okay?
Yes, sir.
Make sure he signs the right stuff.
Yeah.
No hand in that land stuff.
It's high-tech, man. They've got all kinds of places you got to click and check. The final item that's under me for the agenda this evening is a request from our Humane Society. Mr. Rossi's here. He's going to give you a little bit of information. But the bottom line here, gentlemen, is they need a little bit of bridge money until they can get into their next contract. They are continuing to provide services. Mr. Rossi's going to explain to you the request, but they're looking for $30,000 to get them into our next contract.
In addition, they'd also like you to consider possibly moving the work session one week.
Which what?
They would like you to consider possibly moving the work session one week later.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the County Commission, thank you for the opportunity tonight. I'm representing the Lake City Columbia County Humane Society. As we've gotten to the year end, we've found that we have a financial shortfall, and it's due to several factors. The first thing is COVID impacts. We've had a number of days this year where the adoption facility and the clinic had had to be closed because of COVID issues, which means in those days, we could not bring in any revenues or service people in the community. The second thing is we have a very high number of increasing intakes of animals and drop-offs. Currently, and for the last three or four months, we are about 15 to 18 animals per day over capacity, which we're accommodating. The third is, is the Humane Society is like everyone else. We're not immune to inflation. We've had material increases in medical costs for animals and for feed cost. And the fourth, we've had, there's been a decrease in private donations to Humane Society. What the Board has done to address this, they have implemented and they are implementing a strong reorganization structure. I contacted each of you individually, but I will give you the numbers. First thing is, there's been a reduction in the workforce, and it's approximately 17%. Last month this time, there were 36 employees. Today, there are 30. There's been a reduction in the payroll, approximately 13.71%. It's gone down from all of that. They're going to reorganize the Humane Society into three divisions. They want to make sure that, for example, that when you have the animal services and code enforcement, that you have one contact person who knows that side that you can call and speak with, with a backup for that person. There'll be a second division, which is solely the thrift store, and the third division will be the clinic, which will also do the adoptions. There are more steps to come. The reason we're asking for an additional week, we should have most of it completed by then. If everything goes right, and we feel that we can give you better information and more complete information, we had another week to get that together. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Richard, I appreciate you calling me the other day. And like I told you on the phone, I appreciate what you and the Board are doing to make steps forward in trying to get some of the kink worked out. I serve on several volunteer boards, and I know what the challenge can be. I totally understand. But I have no, I'm not about giving money away, and I shouldn't say giving money away, allocating monies, even though I'm the one that made the motion to do the increase once the contract was in place. But, Mr. Chair, I have no problem making the motion to advance the January's payment.
Thank you.
You know, the normal payment. But as far as the increase that we voted on during the budget workshop, leave it as is. But, you know, there's no doubt. They need the money. And David, I can't foresee any problem why we couldn't go ahead and forward the January payment.
Yes, all we would have to do is.
That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Go ahead.
Any discussion?
You guys, you know, I support you 100%.
I know that, and we appreciate the support.
And because I've seen the good, the bad, and the other of what you guys are doing. And I've seen the good, the bad, and the other that we used to do at the Board of County Commission. And you guys have shown that you understand that you need to be reorganized and go at this a different way and look at all aspects of it and present a true cause back to the county. I like the part about one person being contacted instead of here and there and there. And I said again, and I should hold this for the workshop, but the biggest concern I have is the way the complaints was being handled.
Okay, sir.
And we'll talk about that during the workshop.
We appreciate your input. Thank you.
We have any more discussion?
I just, I'd say, I appreciate the effort y'all made. I think y'all realized y'all had some problems. Y'all had some issues y'all needed to resolve. I think you realize the issues we see.
We do.
And I say, I think y'all are headed in the right direction.
It's a new definition of volunteerism for me. I will tell you that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
They did also request for the Board to consider rescheduling the workshop.
Okay.
What day do we have that scheduled for? January 6?
January 6.
Six.
Week to the 13th.
Mr. Chair, go ahead and take a vote on your motion.
Yeah, yeah, I need to do that, get that taken here. This is on the motion on the 30,000, on the advance. The motion is that we advance their regular January payment.
Correct.
Do we have a motion in a second?
We do.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And now we need to, y'all want to set a meeting? Do we need a motion for that, or is that just a direction?
I thought we said our meeting already said.
They want to move it a week.
They want to move it a week. They want to move it up a week so they can have their reorganization and everything completed so they can present that information.
Okay.
Yeah, because you said the first one by motion.
So we got a meeting on the 20th. Do you want to just do it before that meeting?
We can do it early. That gives them a little more time.
What time is the meeting on the 20th?
The meeting on the 20th is at 5:30.
5:30.
I'm good with that.
Do we have a meeting like at 3?
Yeah.
Is that good with everybody? 3 o'clock?
Worked good for me.
Is that good with y'all?
Give me a motion.
I'll make a motion. We move the workshop meeting from the 6th to the 20th at 3 o'clock.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Linas, I think I'm saying that right a hundred knots. You can get on to me. But if you could come down now.
Hi, I have a few cards if you'd like. Those just have some generic information. That's just a little thank you card that went out to our volunteers and donors and participants from this year's efforts, so.
Ms. Linas, can I interrupt you just one second? Have you spoken here before?
I have not.
Okay, it's a two-minute limit, but always after two minutes you. Okay, okay. Oh, she's on the agenda. I'm sorry. That's my mistake, Ms. Linas.
No, it's fine.
Give me your card.
Yeah. Here's it.
There he goes, Kevin, trying to be smart.
And we were able to get the PowerPoint in? No? Okay, that's fine. I'll forward it later. I will reference it, though, while I'm speaking. My name is Nicole Linas. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit organization based out of Gainesville here in North Florida called Current Problems. We are a river and waterway cleanup advocacy and restoration nonprofit. We've been working in the Swanee River Basin and St. John's River Basin for almost 30 years now. We were founded in 1993 by a group of artists and kayakers who liked the Santa Fe River and were on there so much, and they wanted to make conserving it a part of how they enjoyed it. So that's how we started. We're very grassroots. We're very small. It's just me. I'm the only staff person. And we have a team of over 20,000 volunteers statewide who help us do the work that we do. So our mission statement is protecting and restoring the water resources of North Florida for the well-being of wildlife and communities since 1993. And the image on the front of the card is one of our volunteer groups that came out of a local business in Gainesville that partners with us. So all of our volunteers are probably our partners, and our partners are volunteers. That's how we work. And that's a great group that came out with us. Generally, we work across, like I said, the whole Swanee River Basin. So all the way from Valdosta, Georgia, down to Cedar Key. We cover the entirety of also the Santa Fe River, all the tributaries into the Swanee, including the Alapaha with Akuchi. And then we've started to do some work in the St. John's River Basin, but that's very recent. A majority of our work, so for example, this year, it says on your card, "We've removed over 47,000 pounds." Of that, 36,000 came from either Columbia or Olatchua County. So a majority, a very large majority of our work is actually done right here. Our cleanup work over the course of the 30 years, our totals have been 944,171 pounds of trash and debris has been removed from North Florida waterways by our volunteers. Like I said, we have 20,000 volunteers statewide who have contributed over $1.4 million in terms of value of volunteer hours to the state, to this area, to our waterways. Our work can be separated into three different things. Like I said, we do cleanups. All of our cleanups follow a zero-waste protocol, so we don't contribute additional waste in any of our cleanups. We have a really unique system of data management and monitoring. We hand weigh everything we pull out. We categorize and separate everything we remove. And we work to repurpose and recycle as much as we possibly can so that almost none of it ends up making it to the landfill. We partner with local breweries like Howl Patter and First Magnitude in Gainesville, if you're familiar, as well as Cypress and Grove. And they donate their grain bags to us, which are really durable and really good to use for things like broken glass and metal and the sort of typical things we end up pulling out of the river. Also, the atypical things we end up pulling out. But those bags are really great for us, and they keep us from having to buy additional plastic bags to use. And it keeps that plastic out of the waste system, so we're not contributing additional waste. I consider what we do in sort of all of our partnerships and the work that we do with cities and counties and in our waterways sort of two different parts. We work with the city of Gainesville. We've had a contract with them for a very long time. And we're part of their stormwater litter remediation program, so we're under their public works department. That's where our contract with them is based out of, and that uses NPDES funds to support us there. And also, marine. And also marine debris prevention. There are lots of beach cleanup organizations around the state, tons and tons and tons. We are the only freshwater specialized removal organization in the Southeast. We are the only ones doing this kind of work. So I think it's critical because according to recent studies, over 80% of marine debris originates from our freshwater systems. So if we're not stopping it here in central Florida, it's ending up in the Gulf. Or it's ending up affecting our aquifer and our water quality of our drinking water. So both of those things are extremely important to us. A lot of our cleanup work ends up happening, we do it in the rivers, creeks and sinkholes. So we also do large debris removals in sinkholes. People from the public can contact us if they have a sinkhole on their property that's been used historically as a dump site. I mean, you all have lived in this area long enough. You know that that's a very common practice for a very long time. For example, we've got a sinkhole that we're going to be working on this year that has nine refrigerators in it. All of those, all of everything that's leaking out of those refrigerators as they're decomposing, as they're breaking down, as you know, they're corroding, all of that is going straight into the aquifer. That's not okay. We have to prevent that as much as we possibly can. So we try to get the word out to people as much as possible so that they know, one, that dumping in these areas does deplete our water resources and it does contribute to their pollution. And also that we are able to provide resources for them to put their waste somewhere, to sort of redirect that waste so that they don't end up dumping it, whether it be on the side of the road or in a sinkhole. We also do advocacy and restoration work. I think our strongest work in advocacy happens through a program called Clean Creek Fest, which we do out of Gainesville. It's a month-long program that does cleanups. Obviously, we run about two cleanups a week in all the different creeks. But we also partner with a ton of local businesses to bring events to people so that they have a better understanding of their connection to water resources in their area. We have education events with the University of Florida, talking about their urban river system and their urban waterway research that's happening. So in people's own backyards, where do you live? What creek basin are you on? Do you know where your creek empties into? Is it part of the Swanee River Basin? So you know, the water in your backyard is contributing to the ocean or is it part of the aquifer system? So that's the kind of thing that we think is really important to bring in our education programs. And we're on our eighth year of that. So this year will be our eighth year of doing that program out of the city of Gainesville. We've also been coordinating the Great Swanee River Basin Cleanup for over 12 years now. This will be our 12th year doing it. And before we did it, but it was informal. So I say over 12 years, it's probably 28 years since all of our work is in the Swanee or has been anyways. So the Great Swanee River Basin Cleanup happens from September to December every year. And we partner with cities and counties and local businesses and everybody we possibly can to get them the resources and supplies that they need to host cleanups in their area with local volunteers. We provide additional funding and support if the projects are large, things like abandoned and derelict vessel removal. Things like those larger sinkhole projects, like I was telling you, will provide resources. We also provide volunteers to help with the backend that I was describing earlier, the hand weighing, the data collection. We also coordinate the statewide freshwater debris data system, which did not exist before. We started doing it about two years ago when I came in. So impacting work in the future as well. We also do invasive plant removal, so things like coral ardija, if you're familiar. We've helped hazardous waste removal days, two of them actually here in Lake City. So the Rotary Club and Noah Walker coordinated that, if you're familiar with him. So we provided the transportation of all of those hazardous waste materials to the facility in Gainesville through our partnership with the county there and the city there. So that was a huge help. That was over 11,372 pounds of hazardous waste were redirected from Lake City from this area right here. And were able to be removed and disposed of properly so that they don't decompose into our natural areas. In the years between 2020 and 2021, so just these past two years, our volunteers have removed 1,643 pounds of trash and debris from Columbia County waterways. So that's our impact just here in this county, including 248 tires, which are recycled through a partnership we have with Bridgestone Tires to recycle. All the tires we collect out of waterways will end up being recycled instead of taken to landfills. We've also been working with a lot of local groups here. There's a very large kayaking group called, they're a Facebook group. But there's over 11,000 people in that group who regularly frequent, specifically the Santa Fe River primarily. And they've been a huge help to us in coordinating volunteers in this area. And they frequent the area so much and it's so important to all 11,000 of those members that they regularly make conservation a part of them going out and a part of recreation. I talk to boaters all the time. We'll set up on boat ramps, you know, up and down the river and talk to them about ways that they can participate in conservation while they're out there. I just wanted to mention some of the people that we've partnered with historically. So currently, our local business partners in this area that we've been working with for a long time, Amigos Dive Shop, some of you might know Wayne Kennard. He's a huge member of the community and a diver and he's contributed a lot to art, not just our work, but to conservation of the springs and the karst systems and the caves in this area particularly. We've also worked with Hal Patter, Lars Anderson, Rum 138, Anderson's Outdoor Adventures. Like I said, a lot of our, a lot of our program, a lot of our programming happens between the 441 and 47 Bridge. I mean, that's where a majority of our, if we're doing cleanup work, if we're doing advocacy work, that's the area that we're focusing on, which is right here in Columbia County. We also have a research project going on with one of our board members who's doing some research on some of the interesting water chemistry, water quality in Olino. So he's been doing that this year. And that's sort of a new program that we'll, we'll work towards in the future to develop. So that's, I think, all I have. Is it, historically, we've, one of the reasons I'm coming to speak isn't just to talk about the work that we've done this year. Though I do want to make you aware that you have a lot of people in your area and your county who are dedicated to this work and who have done such amazing work this year. I mean, 47,000 pounds the year after almost everything was shut down is incredible. And all of that is redirected out of the waterways here. So it's, you know, protecting all of our water quality. So thank you. If any of you here have participated or shared or are familiar with our work at all, I just want to say a huge thank you so much. And I hope that you continue to be aware of our work and come participate. We always need volunteers. So if you're interested in our work, please, please come volunteer with us. But also, we had a contract with Columbia County for a number of years that lapsed in 2019. The funding came from a source that is, has been reallocated. It was through the state, through the Waste Reduction Fund, which is now, which has been reallocated and doesn't exist anymore. We are, however, interested in, in opening a new contract and would love to work with the county again, specifically bringing in our education programs and really making that a big part. We do a lot with the city of Gainesville right now through our contract with them to do storm drain marking. We do lots of education for them, invasives removal and also debris removal. So a big part of our programming there. But we also will customize our programming for this area specifically because it is different and the people here have different needs. So.
Any questions, Ms. Linas?
I have a question for David. I've seen on here, David, where it said that this is currently budgeted.
No, what happened was it was a grant, I believe it was through forestry that was funded through the landfill. That agency no longer runs that grant program and that's when the contract expired. It was about $20,000 to $25,000 a year. They have come out on several occasions when we had sinkhole debris issues and responded even after the contract expired, but they were not included in this year's budget.
I was just reading on here where it says physical impact on current budget. It says this item is currently budgeted. The account number to be charged is, and then there's no account number.
Yeah, that is incorrect. It was not budgeted. This would be a new report.
I think that's their standard language they put in there. They, they should, they forgot to take that out.
That was a copy and paste, Rocky.
Mr. Chairman?
The, David, the funds that we get from the US Forestry, what's the name of it?
Pilp money?
Pilp money.
Paying it with taxes.
Okay, that we're never able to spend because of the criteria of it. If I recall, there's sizable amount of money there, correct?
There is.
Yeah. It just seems as though that to me, that, you know, I remember being early on, five years ago. Forestry education, education, this education, that, a couple times that partners use it. I would recommend that maybe we set up a meeting with US Forestry and explain the accomplishment. Because what they're stopping here is not going to end up in vice versa. You know, you'll go to a sinkhole in the forest and there's a bunch of dump sites in the forest. This seems like this may be an opportunity to expend some of that money that's just basically sitting there doing nothing that I know of for many years. And Ron's been here long with all of us and he can probably tell you on about three fingers what we've ever spent the money on. And, and I'm sure once the, the sayers of who, you know, whoever's sitting there making up these rules, when they can get this type of presentation. Mr. Holland's worked this, you know, the beer bottles we see in these springs, it's crazy. The hazardous waste thing that we did over here this year, I was over there helping Noah and I carried a bunch of my mess there too. It was amazing. It was really amazing. I appreciate the effort. Now, you're the only one lady showing.
I'm the only one. I'm the, I'm the executive director and sole stock person.
Your husband must make a lot of money.
He's a hard worker.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of good accomplishments.
Thank you so much.
What money were you speaking of?
The pilp money, Ron.
Well, pilp money can't be used for that.
Well, that's. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Pilp money can only be used to, for programs within the national forests. We got pilp money sitting there and the, we tried to, at one time, we had a, a letter from the, the director of the forestry. We used in our summer program several years ago. And then when the new lady came in after Judy Lewis, she would not let us spend any money out of the pilp money. It has to be used in the forest to educate the users of the forest on the benefit that the forest provides to the people that use it.
And that's, that's exactly what I said, Ron. Because as you well know better than anybody, most of it's in your district, a lot of them creeks and what have you end up going to the stream to sinks and what. I'm just saying, I think it's a golden opportunity to go in there. They may not even be aware of what this young lady and her group is doing, you know. And so, you know, education, and they may tell us no again. I'm just saying that's a, that's a good avenue to start in.
Mr. Whitmore?
Mr. Chairman, if you look at our tourism ministry and what we use to bring people to this area and try to attract new businesses, we always, we always mention our rivers and our springs is the core of what this community is. If you listen to the work they're doing, I mean, 20, I mean, I always talk about return on investment here and $25,000. Nothing to speak of what we're getting in, in a product from them. So I would direct, I would suggest we direct the county manager to get with her and let's get a contract on the table. Let's look for funding resources. But I mean, this is a no-brainer. You have to fund this. $25,000 is a bargain for what they're doing.
Where did they, where did they, the grant money, where did they reallocate that money?
The grant just expired.
Oh, it just expired for the.
So right now, the grant money that we get, we use for litter pickup countywide. That's the money that the landfill gives Quinn to do litter pickup countywide.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Whit. For $25,000, I mean, to get the trash picked up out of the river, the amount that they pick up.
46,000 pounds, 47,000 pounds right here.
It's amazing to me how the river, 20 years ago, people didn't rent houses on the river. Now, we have bed and, you know, bed and breakfast. We have the Airbnbs all up. It's amazing what, it's this eco-tourism thing is really a big deal. So I'm with you. I don't, I don't see any downside of this because the first thing we say is come see our rivers and springs. So it's a big deal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
David?
Yes, sir.
The $25,000 in grant money without a grant from the county or a grant from the state?
It was a grant from the state to the county through the landfill.
And it came to the county and the county gave it to this organization?
Right, we funded it to the.
Have we ever ordered that organization about the money that we gave them? I keep hearing taxpayers, oh, we're not going to give them any more money until we get an audit from them. Well, just go for this, this organization also. We made Eagle Wang do it if we had to give Eagle Wang the money to do the audit with. So what's good for one is good for everybody else.
The grant expired in 2019. I do not believe we've ever received an audit from their organization, but we can definitely ask them for that.
So that'd just be part of the negotiations of, you know, the presentation of whatever, you know, their contract.
So we would apply the same regulations we do to other agencies to this agency.
Yep.
David, can you get, get with Ms. Nicole and let's get some information from them and bring this back something on this?
Yes, it will probably be the earliest, the second meeting in January.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Let's see if we can help you out.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, we have found out that there is a conflict in the afternoon of the 20th. There's not a conflict in the morning of the 20th, but there is a conflict in the afternoon of the 20th, if the board would like to reconsider the humane society.
What's the conflict?
The sheriff will be unable.
So y'all want to try to do it the, is it afternoon? They talking about 3 o'clock?
Right, he says 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, he would have a conflict. He could do it possibly in the morning before lunch, but after lunch he has a conflict.
What do you think?
There's a conflict with the 20th for that, for the meeting on the.
In the afternoon.
For the workshop. So they're talking about moving it to the morning. Are you okay with the morning?
I don't like morning meetings. They gate people ability to come. What's the conflict?
The sheriff is unable to attend.
The sheriff is unable to attend.
Well, whenever.
And if we move it any farther, it'll be into February where the, you know.
I mean, I'm okay with a morning meeting, but I can, I'm, I'm pretty much open, I guess, as far as I know right now for any day.
Do you want to move it up a week and not have it on a day that we don't have a meeting?
Can't move it up a week. They need the next week. The 13th, there was an extra week. We set it to the 20th.
They didn't actually read from the 6th, so that's the 13th. So it could be the 13th, the week of the 13th. We actually moved it two weeks. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. We actually moved it two weeks, really, so.
The one thing I would stress, it definitely needs to happen in the evening because there's going to be a lot of participation, I would assume, in this.
So you can do it.
We can move it to the week of the 13th if there's no.
I'm good with that 13th at 5:00, 5:30. I'll make a motion. We move the meeting to the 13th at 5:30.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Huh?
All opposed? Okay, so the meet, the meeting workshop will be the 13th at 5:30. Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Only this? Mr. Kirby?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have five items for your consideration this evening. The first, as we continue to grow, we did this a few years ago at Public Works. We have found the need to reclassify 1 E03 to an E04 out of the landfill. So basically, in your operational divisions, we've always had E01s through 3s. Once again, we found the need to bump it up to a 4. This provides a second person for additional duties of operation, roll-off and knuckle boom trucks. Does require a Class B CDL and a landfill operations certification within six months of hire date. That's a very important item. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, recommended motion to approve the attached revised equipment operator forward position and reclassify 1 E03 to an E04. operator forward position and reclassify one E O three to an E O four with the stated hourly rate of pay.
So, move. Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. The second item is the roof repair. Obviously, we had multiple issues with the roof out at Public Works. We went out to bid, received five bids. Mr. Noel validated the low bidder as a very qualified bidder. Therefore, recommended motion to approve bid and contract of McCurdy Walden, Inc., in the amount of $104,848.
So, move. Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before we start with our scrap scot and sickly submissions, I'm very pleased to announce, assuming we get these projects along with Burley and Six here later this evening, a long list of a decade plus submissions, if we're lucky enough to get these in 2026, basically have been completed. So, once we get these, we'll basically start over on the cycle of DOT submissions, so that's really a milestone for us. All three of these projects, once again, have been previously submitted in the past over the last decade, last decade plus. The first one is Gum Swamp Road, twelve and a half miles at a $7.9 million price tag. Of course, Gum Swamp starts there at five points and runs out to the county line. The second one is Arlington Road at a $755,000 price tag. This is off of Sisters Welcome. This goes to your middle school, very bad shaped road. The final is Old Country Club or County Road 133 from 252 to U.S. 90 at a $1.5 million price tag. Okay? Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting a motion to approve FDOT for scrap scot, sickly, County Road 250 Arlington and 133 for 2026 submission.
So, move. Second. We got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. The next item for your consideration, we're continuing on at a rapid pace with annual resurfacing projects. Eloise Street at 202,000, the Piccadilly Park Corridor at 570, the Old Wire at 1.275 in totality at a two plus, $2,47,000 price tag. Eloise Street, of course, is located over off of Baya Avenue to U.S. 90. Piccadilly Park is one of our older subdivisions and disrepair, Olive County Road 242 West. Old Wire Road is the completely damaged road from Nautilus up to 240. So, at this time, I'm requesting approval to move forward with those county funded projects. Those are all part of our annual, annual resurfacing in that the budget process is there.
I make a motion to approve the local road project as presented. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you. The next item at the last board meeting, I requested direction as it relates to State Road Six and Burley Road. FDOT has agreed to reimburse the amounts on a defined payback schedule of ten quarterly payments beginning in the year of funding. There's a slight twist right there. So, once again, they've agreed to reimburse in the proposed years, let us go ahead and do the work, reimburse us in the years 24, 25, or 23 and 24. Only twist to it is basically a quarterly payment at ten installments or three years. Everything else stays the same. So, the last time I said, it's a unique partnership, kind of bending your own rules. Guys, y'all got these roads in real bad repair. If y'all want to go ahead and fix them, we will, we will reimburse you. So, I'm requesting a motion to approve annual resurfacing projects in an amount of $2,47,648, approved for State Road Six and Burley in an amount of 5.622 for reserves, with the understanding to reimburse the revenue reserves accounts once FDOT refunds amounts on defined payback schedule of ten quarterly payments beginning in the year of funding.
So, move. Second. I have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion?
I think this is a great deal for the county and I appreciate the state working with us on this.
Thanks.
I do too. I want to thank DOT Public Works for helping us like this because it, it has to be done. I, I have a, any more discussion? I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, gentlemen. The final issue I have, I'm gonna work through it real slow. Watson Road, this road pulls off of State Road 47 to the west and east. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the leg that pulls off to the west. This is a dirt road. For as long as I remember, we have been talking about this curve at Watson Road. In June of this year, per Mr. Ford's request, I attended a meeting with him and many members of the family and other neighbors down in that neck of the woods. At that time, they declined to entertain any of the options, and I'll explain the options. On the top, you'll see State Road 47 right there. Here's the curve in question. So, let's start here and go here. Right here is what our main problem is, right here. We have two forms of a dirt road, prescriptive right of way and dedicated right of way. So, for lack of a better word, this is a large family, but we'll call Mrs. Houston the matriarch of the family. She lives right there. Once again, the current road goes like that. She has a motor grating. We, along with every other dirt road, we have a tendency to take a quarter of an inch at the time as we're grading the dirt road. It's just the nature of the beast. We have placed delineators, we have placed signage, we have done everything we can to accommodate her. It is not her fault. With the negotiations of this proposed curve. The pointer's not working. The curve that we were talking about down here, she owns land on both sides. She said, what are we going to do about the land in front of our house? I said, ma'am, with the board's approval, and I know they'll support me on this, I will simply go right here and move that dirt road in front of your house. There's no problems there, other than we've gotten in her front yard through the last 25 or 30 years. We will at no cost to you move that dirt road to the south, put a dogleg in it, replace all your fences, it won't cost you a nickel. We really need your help with that curve down there. Okay, so, we know what we've offered up there at the front, once again, no cost. Here's your curve in question. The current limo rock grade, dirt grade is what you have out there now. What you see in red will be the required proposed alignment. Once again, Mrs. Watson, on property here and here. It's all, when I say Mrs. Watson, they're estate. So, the area needed is the area right here, basically abandoned this. So, on this end, just like in front of her house, when I offered to move the road to the south, move her fence at no cost, I said, we'll come in with good top soil, top material, we'll backfill the existing road in front of your house and sod it back. That eliminates your dust problem, that eliminates us encroaching on your yard. Offer here, once again, for the last decade, use the red root, eliminate the current road, fill it back all up with backfield, grass it back, and the acreage involved is very minute on their side, but it's basically an even swap. Does that make sense? Land that we would need to straighten the curve out is like and similar to the acreage and like a tenth of an acre on their side even better. Okay, here's just a little more detailed drawing. Once again, you see the existing, uh, David helped me out here. You see the existing, there you go, that's your existing, and then the new proposed is right there above. We're simply straightening it out to eliminate the bad intersection. Okay? Mr. Ford and I were inundated about three more times a couple of weeks ago with emails, near wrecks, people running off in ditches, et cetera, sending us photographs. Mr. Ford come and said, Kevin, I'm tired of talking about this. I said, yes, sir. What do you want me to do? So, I'm here tonight, we've done without the acquisition of the said property that we're discussing. I have been led to believe for over a decade of dealing with this issue, that is simply not going to happen on a willing basis. So, on behalf of Commissioner Ford, I have presented as I know how to do, and I'm subject to any questions.
I, I just want to, what's going on is to the west, can you put that back up?
Yes, sir.
To the west is Oldie Stutney Road. That.
To the left.
To the, to your left, if you stay straight, you come out on Oldie Stutney. Well, all that area between there and Oldie Stutney and Oldie Stutney has been developed with houses, more people moving out there. So, this intersection is heavily traveled now, and it's a real safety concern because what happens is you got people making that curve, you got people coming in off of, uh, I can't, uh, what's that road name going?
Orville.
Orville, yeah. You got people coming on Orville, and we've had multiple wrecks out there. We've had school bus wrecks here, we've had motor wrecks there, and it's getting worse and more dangerous every day with more people moving in. Right now, we did put a stop sign, we just done this, we put a stop sign right here at Watson, where you take the curve to the right, and we put a stop sign, basically we turned it into a three-way stop. But still, you cannot see if anybody's coming, where you stop at, you still can't see the intersection, see if anybody's coming. And, uh, I think we, we just, we have wrecks out there every week, and everybody out there is just raising cane because we have a very dangerous situation. And we, I don't know what the answer is, but we have to do something. And Ms. Watson is not, she's not willing to work with us on any way of trying to fix this problem, as far as property.
So, the proposed up here, Kevin, Ms., I know, but Ms. Watson is not willing to swap.
Commissioner Murphy, let me try to capture the timeline. We started off by trying to straighten this curve out. We talked about money, we talked about finances, we talked about it all. It came on down to the last time, she was always bringing back the fact in front of her house, which I understand. So, I said, Mrs. Houston, Mrs. Houston, I'm not sure which, but I said, ma'am, which is formerly Mrs. Watson? Ma'am, I completely understand your concern, and if your concern is not wanting to work with Columbia County because you feel like you've been wrong in front of your house, I feel very confident that the board of county commissioners will support me in moving this dirt road over at no cost, out near cow pasture, moving your fences, create you a new dirt road away from your house, which nothing needs to be done other than inconvenience for her, backfilling that existing dusty road that's bothering her, sodding it back. Will you now work with us on this curve? Even, let's talk money, you're gaining a little property, we'll plant trees, we'll do whatever, mow the grass, what do you want us to do? That resulted in Commissioner Ford organizing a town hall, if you may, at their local church, which I attended with Commissioner Ford. At the time of that meeting, upon conclusion, I think, Commissioner Ford, you correct me if I'm wrong, I'm very clear after the talks, after another written letter, an email or two, that's never going to happen. Period. So, with Commissioner Ford and myself, we continue to get inundated. For lack of a better word, he came to me a couple of weeks ago and says, what are we going to do here? I said, Commissioner Ford, I'm gonna put it to you as clear as we can. Without that dirt to straighten the curve out, there's nothing to talk about. It's prescriptive right of way. So, how does that work? Seven years a day, we've, we validate, we have no property to straighten the curve out.
Yeah, I, I, I think where we're at, Ford, is, I'm kind of asking y'all, y'all want eminent domain this property to, to, uh, fix this problem? I mean, I don't know what else to do, but we have to fix this problem.
Mr. Williams?
Uh, 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 before, I went out there twelve, fourteen years ago and talked to this one. Like Dewey was the, was the commissioner, I believe it was, or somebody. And she wouldn't give the right of way there to say she didn't want the road in front of her house. And the only way you're gonna get is enter domain, but you're gonna piss off all the Watsons out there.
Well, you know, I talked to all of them and, and she kind of had control of that property. And when I left that meeting, talking to the, talking to the gentleman that all the attending the meeting, I thought we had a pretty good deal. And then we got shot, shot down flat from her. And they made it clear to me that she made the decision on that, devil.
The, the only thing about eminent domain, the attorney gonna have to show that it's in the best interest of the citizens of Columbia County to, to, to enter in eminent domain. Uh, it, back in old days, you could easily do eminent domain, but, but that eminent domain issue went always Supreme Court, the Supreme Court did some guidelines on eminent domain, and whether this meets the guideline set forth by the Supreme Court, I don't know that up to the attorney. I think we need to be acting am about eminent domain.
I, I think every commissioner for the last 20 years has dealt with this issue out there, that's been addressed to you. I've, I've been dealing with it since I've got elected. I know Commissioner Weaver, and I know, uh, Mr. Crater dealt with it before that. I, I don't know if y'all aware of it, but that's the, Mr. Hudson School, remember?
Yeah.
That's where that wreck occurred, and then he got some, hurt, that hurts bad with the school bus. So, I mean, this is, this is a bad situation there. Uh, and, and it's just a matter of time, somebody's, somebody's gonna get healed of it.
Mr. Kirby, if I can ask you a question. Right there in front of her house, the property across from that, is, that's not her property across the street from her?
Yes, sir, it is.
But we're not, we're not going on her property, we're just using our easement.
No, sir, let me, let me kind of explain.
In other words, we're giving her her yard back and taking our easement on other side.
Okay. We would swap her, that property.
Take a little from one side and give her her yard back.
For her, to get it further away from her. I mean, we've made every, I, we've asked her just, what do you want?
Commissioner Hall, or, Mr. Chairman, for clarification, the only reason I, I bring this up is, is Commissioner Ford indicated, I think under three commissioners now, I've been asked to talk to Mrs. Watson and Commissioner Williams, I recall when you went out there, and that was my last ditch effort of saying, we want to work with you. That, that's all that has to do with this piece up towards 47.
And, and she doesn't, she's actually gained a little land or?
Okay, she, right here, the only thing benefit she's getting is we're moving the dirt road away from her house. So, even swap, right. The, the, the benefit there is getting the dirt way, road away from her house, right? Now, what I'm referring to by even swap, if you'll see where the current road is, the white versus the red, which is proposed, if you take those acreages, we might as well call it an even swap. If anything, it's a tenth of an acre on her side.
And this is a dirt road, so it's not gonna be a lot of money to fix the problem, we just need.
Commissioner Ford's exactly right. The actual going out there performing the work is that. You don't have the dirt to do that. You don't have the property to do that.
Kevin, the black lines of the show is coming right here to the south, you know, the articulated square line. Right there in the middle of the intersection?
Yes, sir.
There you go, where David's at there. What is that, our right of way inside of that?
Yes, sir, I think so. I'll show you more, here's your more detailed look right there. See your current right of way?
Yeah.
See it right there?
Okay.
And then you got your new proposed where the dotted lines are versus solidified lines? But yes, sir. I mean, we, we have, we have had two different engineers, we've looked at it every which way, but Sunday. The only reasonable way to, because you got Orville running north and south, Watson running east and west, the only reasonable way to straighten it out is bump it up there to north of that long gentle curve. It's just, that's the way it's got to go to solve your problem.
Mr. Kirby, correct me if I'm wrong, but this drawing was done 10 years ago, right?
I've been dealing with this at least 12 or 13 years.
Yeah, 12 years ago. I mean, just how long this been going on? And, uh, it's just getting worse and worse because we getting more and more traffic on that road.
And, and Commissioner Ford, you hit the nail on the head. What's changed out there is the volume of traffic. The, the curve's been there for 100 years. It's the volume of traffic.
And I can tell you, I, I don't, you know, I don't see it on, be on main. That is a fat, they drive that road now. I did a surveillance there for four days, and they do 75 mile an hour.
And in, in the Watson's defense, and I'm not trying to put my piece in there, but I, I understand, if I'm living out there on my farm for all those years, I'm not harming a soul. Somebody built a bunch of development there to your west. Well, you know, in their way of looking things, I'm, I'm not done a dabbling thing different. I'm out here farming, tending to my business. I see, then you've got the folks. I see, then you've got the folks that moved in, beating Mr. Ford up, and other ones up saying, Lord have mercy, my young'un's gonna get in a wreck right there. And that's your issue. That, that is it in a nutshell, but I see, I see both sides of it.
She's on that land, what, what is your?
Ever.
Sitting there for it?
Yeah. Seventy-five years.
Commissioner Ford, um, you know, the, the, the public purpose and the public necessity, um, I'd have talked to the engineer. I don't think there's any question, uh, that if we petition for this, a court's likely to give us an order of taking, allow us to go forward. A couple of, I've actually gone out and toured this site as well, and I think some things that you don't see on the drawing is that that, that, that inside corner, uh, she has fencing on there, it's also above grade from where the road is. So if you imagine coming down Orville, and you're gonna go to the left onto Watson, you don't see down Watson until you get all the way to that corner. Well, the stop sign is all the way up, uh, on Orville, at the end of Orville, as it touches the top curve of Watson. So there's a big section there where you're just flying by. And if somebody comes down Watson, so again, the safety issue that's created here is not hard to appreciate. Uh, our engineer is happy to testify that this is the only way to properly fix it. You've got the location of the sinkhole, you've got a cemetery, I think y'all can see as you come out of the newly formed curve, there's a family cemetery not being disturbed at all. Uh, I think a circuit judge is likely to agree. You're probably gonna get a quick take, you can go out there and make the repairs, you know, resolve the safety issue, and then we've got the question of compensation. Now, the unfortunate thing is, the question of compensation is only gonna relate to this one piece of property. The, the proposal that Mr. Kirby forwarded to move the road away from her front yard is gonna go away if we go this route. I, I do intend, if the board indicates that they wanna go forward, I do personally intend to go out and have one more conversation to hopefully save some litigation expenses. But if, if it's the board's intention to move forward, I have to prepare a resolution and the declaration of taking. I can make sure that's on the board's next agenda. So you can direct me to go forward and prepare that, you won't actually formally vote until the next board meeting. But I do think, and I agree, I've, I've talked to Mr. Kirby about this at length. I think you're at the point where you either decide to go eminent domain, or you decide you're not gonna address the issue. Say your thing.
Mr. Chairman, is there any way, if we do move forward this, you bring it back to the next board meeting, to also get the real data on how many incidents over the years have occurred there? So we're not just saying, well, there's been a lot of wrecks here, we've got like firm data to present to the public.
Yes, sir, and as a matter of fact, I'll put that in the, I, I'll get that from staff and make sure it's included in the resolution. Your resolution is actually presented to the circuit court in support of the petition. Um, so yeah, we'll definitely have that case put together for you, so you can consider that before you vote.
Kevin, do you think you could put a counter out there too, just, would that help us at all?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I, and I have, I've, I've done everything we've heard talking about right now, but I can update everything, yes, sir. And, and I think, and I don't wanna speak out of turn. The challenge is, is I don't have a lot of data count ten years ago that shows what we know, the vol, the volumes, what's changed. And I, I don't know that you're gonna have a lot of scientific data of actually how many wrecks have happened. There's been several. What I've heard out of it is, because it, it is a rural dirt road, the neighbors know about the wrecks, they kinda tend to it before. Law enforcement gets there. Okay, but I, I have everything in a file, and I'll be happy to pull more counters down for seven days.
Uh, Mr. Pittman?
He lives right past that corner, he can, he can test out. He, he'll tell you what happens about every weekend out there.
Well, if, if that many wrecks happen, that, that should be records of them somewhere.
Yeah. Well, you have people hitting the ditch, we're trying to miss cars hitting ditch, and.
But, but again, and, and, and I, I understand exactly what Mr. Ford's able to go through here, but, uh, if Mr. Hunter sat there on that corner, he, he could increase his budget. And, but if they pay attention to this true speed limit there, you, you got a lot less chance of having any issues, because they don't. But of course, Mr. Hunter can't, Sheriff Hunter can't afford to say that, or on a rural road like that, but, I mean, Robbie's right, they fly up and down that thing. But I do know it's twenty-nine.
That don't change the fact, we've got a blind corner there.
Yeah.
And we have a dangerous intersection.
Mm-hmm.
But, but you also.
I don't, I don't, we, we can say we could do this, we could do that. Bottom line is, we have a dangerous intersection, and we're responsible for fixing it.
And, and on the same hand, we have a farm family that's been there, I don't know how many hundreds of years, so. You know, it, it's a tough thing. Tough for me.
And I, I, like I say, I'm, I'm good with what Mr. Whitson said, we'll get some, some data, and we'll bring it back and make a decision on this.
They can make a good, due diligence, find out all the answers.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Thank y'all.
David?
Mr. Chair, before you move on, uh, should I prepare the resolution?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, I guess, get us more information, and, 'cause we need to really make sure we know what we're doing here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I'll try to be brief this evening. Um, so the first thing I have on your agenda is BA twenty-two dash twenty. It's the clerk of the courts financial report for twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one. Basically, they will return one hundred thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars in non-court revenues from last year's budget. They are requesting that the board reappropriate it back into this year's budget, um, for operational expenditures.
So you asking for a motion?
I would need a motion to approve Budget Amendment twenty-two dash twenty.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
All right, the next budget amendment is Budget Amendment twenty-two dash twenty-two. Uh, previously, you had allocated money and placed it in reserves to build a, uh, crime scene slash evidence slash maintenance building. As you know, the evidence has accumulated, and, uh, they're just running out of space at the sheriff's office. Uh, you had placed that money, this year you budgeted eight hundred thousand to match the money that was sitting in reserves. But the sheriff's office is now requesting is that we transfer the money for, out of reserves into their reserves, and then, uh, place it into a, a trust fund, if you will, or a, a fund, um, what they call an agency trust fund. So that money sits there for that building while they construct the building, so it doesn't roll over back into fund balance at the end of every fiscal year.
No more discussion.
Sure.
We got a motion?
Yeah.
He moved for the stuff.
I'll second.
I made a motion, I said, tell him to move for discussion.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's done the struggle. I'll second.
Sheriff, you, you get, fit to get started on your building now?
Well, once we get this, we can start. I mean, we're working on it, I mean, I've got some tentative plans, but, uh, we need this money moved in there, and what this will allow us to do is to be able to pay the bills. And then when we get to year end, uh, if, you know, the project gets expen, uh, you know, projected out or whatever, um, protracted out, should I say, then we won't have to be turning the money back in and then going back again. But we'll be following all of the county principles and policies and, and procedures for, uh, for, for doing the construction.
They're gonna finally get the evidence built.
We hope so. We hope so.
All right. Well, I think this is a, it's definitely right direction to get started, so. Uh, you have a design already, right?
Well, uh, uh, not a, um, a draw, a, a building design. I'm saying, you know, to be able to go out there and start building. We have the architectural design, but then we gotta, you know, we gotta put the bids out to get the actual drawing plans and do all that stuff.
Are you gonna design, build, building, or are you gonna architect and push your plans?
Well, uh, as we get started, we'll, uh, hire somebody to come in and oversee the project, and then we'll do, we'll do up the drawings, basically like we did with the jail. And have those people draw the building up, we'll have specs, and then we'll hire the contractors to do it.
Any more discussion? We got a motion, a second, correct?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
The next item is another budget amendment, twenty-two dash twenty-three. It's, uh, to reimburse the TDC. Basically, we charged the fireworks to the TDC account accidentally, should've been charged to the general fund account. So this would be the general fund refund, putting that money back into the TDC. Additionally, you promised three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the reimbursement monies that came from CARES to fund the Flatfield master plan. This would take that money and put it into the TDC fund, making it easier for them to expend those monies as they move forward on that master plan. And then finally, three hundred and three thousand dollars is for the forty-five percent of the cost of the renovations that are used by non-tourist development. As you know, TDC monies have to be used for tourist development purposes. So therefore, those sections of the building that are not tourist development purposes, we need to reimburse them for.
No more, Mr. Chairman, second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
So now we have an RFP, twenty, twenty-one dash N. This is the CDBG DRI grant administration for Parnell Hills. Basically, we had one respondent, he said, uh, we sent it up to D E O, they said it's okay with one respondent. They looked at the proposal, the E O looked at the cost analysis of the proposal. They approved it, and they said, if you wanna proceed, you can contract with this person and begin your grant administration. So we're asking you to approve and award the proposal, and issue a contract to Guardian Community Resources Management Incorporated.
So moved. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
So the next item is twenty-twenty-one L, it is the sister to the first one, but it is for high dry acres. Again, same moment, same motion, which is to award the proposal, and issue a contract to Guardian Community Resource Management.
Subtle.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Finally, uh, the board had requested that I come back with a job description for a potential new position. So this is the job description for what I call the developments project manager. Uh, this is somebody to take on all those big, large projects we have coming on that we don't currently have staff for. And, uh, we were saying that it would be a negotiable position. Uh, we're asking you to create, approve the position description, place the project manager's position in the pay scale as negotiable, and then finally to authorize the creation of the new position in the HTE system. Once we hire somebody, we'll come back with a budget amendment to fund the position.
I think with all, with all we have going on, we've got to fix the start, we've got to do this. We really need this help, and, uh, I'll make a motion.
A second. All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Finally, we have an update on parcel ten dash four S dash sixteen, zero-two-eight-six-seven dash zero-zero-zero. So what I wanna assure the board is, we've been, you wronged us. We, uh, if you don't buy our property, we're going to sue you. So we worked with the property and said, came to you last week and said, we have a proposal to buy the property. If we buy the property, this is how we would use it. The board then said, no, the price is too high, go out and order an appraisal. We proceeded to go ahead and order the appraisal, and in addition, we filed it with our errors and omissions insurance, and so a claim has been filed with our insurance agent.
Okay, this, this is in my district, and, um, it was a simple mistake, nobody at this table is, was, was at fault, nobody here today is at fault. I don't think anybody still here is at fault for that, but, but we have insurance for these kinda issues. Um, and that's why we have it, and, and I feel like that's the way to go. And, and I don't know what'll come of that or what won't, but I think our insurance is made for mistakes, things we do wrong. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm about leaving that with them, and let's see what they work out. Um, I, I also, I know it had been mentioned about getting it zoned, but I, I don't, I, I would not be for that because it's at, right at the entrance of one of my biggest subdivisions, and I don't know what they would use this place for, I don't know. But I'm, I'm, I'm not for rezoning.
And we'd like to assure the board, our normal course of action whenever we get a threat of a lawsuit is, first try to resolve it, and then if you can't try to resolve it, proceed. So that's what we did.
The insurance company will do some more.
Well, you said you've ordered a survey, I mean, a.
The board directed us to order an appraisal, and we, the following day, we ordered the appraisal. It has not been done yet. Uh, they gave us, I think, four weeks, three weeks? Okay, three months to get it done. So the appraisal hasn't started yet, but we have ordered it.
I agree with Commissioner Hollisworth, I think we, uh, we just follow through with our insurance, see where that goes, and if it don't work out, then we'll take, take a different approach.
So do you stop the appraisal?
That would be the board's discretion, if you wanted to stop the appraisal, we could. What typically will happen is, the insurance company will appoint a, an adjuster. And if it does end up going to court, they will appoint an attorney, because our attorney is, of course, not able, uh, is conflicted. So they would take care of that as well. Of course, you know, as with everything else, when the attorney's getting involved, then you might go to mediation, or you might go to court. At some point, a settlement is reached.
Ron?
No, I, 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 I agree, I think we should go the route we're talking about going now, and then once, if it don't work out, then we wear our hoppin' gear.
I, I mean, I, I, I don't remember, I admit it, but, but, so we don't need motion for that, you just need a direction, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Got our marching orders, okay. So then on the additions, the first item is one that Mr. Kirby could probably speak better than I. Um, but in a nutshell, we know Jan Smithy is retiring. Kevin has selected the person that he wants to replace Jan Smithy. He would like to have that person working alongside Jan Smithy until she retires. Um, to do so, we need the board to create and authorize a temporary position of office manager to pay the person to do the job while Jan's in the position. And then when Jan retires, the temporary position would go away.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't like the way you said it. You can't say, I know who I wanna put in a position, but position come open, you go and advertise for the position.
They've already selected the person.
Uh.
Do that, there's not even a job.
Yeah, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I think we, the crowd's been spoken a bit. Mrs. Smith, I think March one is her last day, plus or minus. We knew this was coming, we went in and advertised, et cetera, and made the selection. This is her current lawyer, she made the cut, she's been selected. This really baffles me, we have done this multiple times. Miss Cotty, or Miss Shreel, Pam, Ed Loggs. We have always tried a transitional period, so you don't become cold.
I'm not, I'm not talking about transition period, I, I don't have a problem with that. I think it should work that way. I, I think, you live, losing someone retired in her capacity, that you don't let her walk out the door without having somebody there before she goes to learn the ins and outs of. But my only question was, the person that we gonna put there, that we go, if we moving them from in-house position to that position, or did we advertise for that position?
Both.
Both.
They advertised for the position and selected the internal candidate.
Yeah, and if we advertise for that position, then we should put her in there prior to she, her, or, 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 or plant losing that employee. So she can learn the ins and outs.
So, so, Ron, your concern is answered, we did advertise.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I, that's why I told you, I didn't like the way he said it. Well, we know who we wanna put in there, you just say we have advertised position, we, yeah, that's all I was saying.
You're correct, you are correct.
Given where that, wherever that person's coming from, have they already advertised that job and working on transition thing too?
I think so. But just, just for clarification, if we're not confused, we did follow a normal process. The candidate we chose was luckily an in-house person that got promoted. And once again, I was completely baffled, we've done this multiple times without coming in front of the board, but I'm glad to be here tonight.
I, I agree, Mr. Kirby, I didn't like the way he said it, so somebody could've took it out, but that's what I'm thinking.
I need to be more elegant.
Just, just for housekeeping, I'm gonna say, all opposed.
None. Motion passes.
All right, so the final item we have tonight is the purchase of another BDA for the jail. So as you know, during the budget process, you approved a BDA for the, or for the courthouse, and you approved a BDA for the jail. Um, what a BDA is, for anybody who doesn't know, is if you're in. Um, what a BDA is for anybody who doesn't know is if you're inside the Sallyport, there is no radio signal. So if they're transporting a prisoner, they don't, and something happens, they have no way to contact anybody for assistance. Uh, they, it's complete radio silence because the building is made of concrete. It's of such size and structure, the radio signals just don't get in and out of the building. The jail with the new concrete cells is the same way. So when we started the process, in the budget process, we believed that one BDA would cover the jail. What we now know is with people having been out there, you're going to need a BDA in the new cells and you're going to need a BDA in the administrative buildings to truly be able to communicate between the two buildings. Um, the reason we walked it on today is we've purchased one BDA. We'd like to go ahead and purchase a second BDA so that we can save money. So when we wire it, we don't have to bring it in, set it up, wire it, pay all that money to set it up, then have to come back later to do the other one and pay that money again. We can just do both BDAs at the same time and pay mobilization only once.
Makes sense.
BDA costs approximately twenty-three thousand dollars.
Any discussion?
Some move. Take the recommendation.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes.
You know.
Thank you very much.
Our deputies have got to be able to communicate with each other.
Especially in that jail.
Yeah.
It's, it's just day-to-day work in the jail. It's going to be tough without that. Okay. We have, uh, open comments to the board. Anybody want to comment? Come on down. I like that bow tie.
Steve Smith, tonight I represent the Chamber of Commerce and Commission, there is something in the air. There's something in the economic development air that I'm breathing that's starting to stir me up and getting me excited, anticipating something big. So I simply wanted today to say, I think I'm going to, I'm going to prophesy that five years from now, y'all are going to be dealing with some wonderful growing pains. And we're going to be looking back to, to now and all the work and leadership that y'all have provided this last couple of years and that you continue to do that. And we're going to be very happy with what's, what's going on. So I just want to say thank you for that. Uh, two, uh, don't take your foot off the gas pedal. Keep going and, and grow this community, uh, economic development. So thank you.
Thank you. Any more open comments? Any staff comments?
I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Mr. Chair.
Merry Christmas.
Mr. Witt's got a comment.
Everybody.
Merry Christmas. Mr. Witt's got a comment.
I got a question for Mr. Kirby. I've, uh, heard of the great vine of forty-one South, uh, being resurfaced, redone. And I'm just curious because of the multiple, um, accidents at, at Watermelon Park at that intersection. Are there turn lane, turning lanes proposed for that when they get there?
Roundabout.
No, we don't want a roundabout.
Mr. Chair. Um, Commissioner Witt, you are correct. It is in the workland. It is, it is a job. Whether or not there's consideration, I know exactly where you're talking about. There at that sausage intersection. I'm unaware if they're proposing any turn lanes or not, but I would strongly recommend they do.
Can, can we communicate with them to recommend turning lanes?
Yes, sir. If that's what the board rates, we do, yes.
Absolutely.
They're definitely needed there. That's for sure.
Okay. With your permission, um, if the board sends me that recension off a rare letter to Secretary Evans' board.
Your scent.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more commissioner comments?
Yeah, I got, uh, one, uh, all you're aware, and me and Kevin's had this discussion. I'm not a sidewalk person, but, uh, I represent the people. We had a young man lose his life last week, uh, out on the water, uh, riding the bike in the middle of the road. My understanding, I don't know all the details anyway. Uh, but of course, it's these type of situations that bring other people's interest out. Uh, Kevin, this correctly is Safe Schools Act or something? Is that where the sidewalks come from at the? Uh, like I said, I, uh, I, I represent the people in the neighborhoods and I would ask, uh, that while we're in the funding cycle or hopefully asking the state for money to at least put, uh, water, little road on that. Even though it does go to Belmont and of course, uh, that's one of the areas that grew so fast that I lost a lot of the south in the, my area too. So, uh, a lot more people moving in there. So it's, uh, but it, it is very dark. Of course, I had a bunch of them say, hey, we need streetlights down here. And I don't know for what they're, yeah, on the streetlight, but you know, but I, I'd just ask you if you would publicly to, uh, try to move that along and put that tick in the right people's ears, please.
I have one.
Go ahead.
With Kirby, uh, uh, Mr. Kirby, uh, talk to me about mowing cycles. We know that we've rolled up mobile twice. We have four mowing cycles. How, what are we going to do with this? How are we going to handle this deal? And I don't know, and I don't know where we are on urban mowing or cleaning it up.
Okay. So I'll break it down urban mowing first. Okay? Their con, their contract has concluded. Okay? We are, basically they run out of time. We are in the process of rewriting a completely different version of the urban mowing contract. What we found the last go around, it just completely confused me. So along the top of that, Commissioner Ford has been assisting me through Swan County, trying to secure our inmates back with a different methodology. Early twenty-twenty-two, our goal, we had a meeting with the board in last week at Columbia. There's a lot of moving parts with prison system up there. I'm of the opinion that if we train the right people, about the farm we hired to three crew leaders, if you may, to go and pick the inmates up, so forth and so on. But I'm going to give you a long answer. We worked through all that. We're rewriting the urban mowing business. This year, we're going out back to bid for rural mowing. The exact status of the rural, the urban mowing is complete. I can answer that. The rural mowing, I want to say we're finishing up, but don't quote me on that. I've not taken it the last few days, but it's reaching the BDD. So if you ask me tonight, we're going out to bid with a rural contract. We're going out to bid with multiple faucets of the urban contract. Whether that be garbale mowing, sidewalk mowing, ditch mowing, that kind of stuff. And in addition to that, we're going to try to shore up our edges with the prison inmates. Did I answer your question?
Sort of.
We're trying, we know we don't want to do what we did last year.
Hopefully we'll have three inmate crews by next, by this time.
Commissioner Williams, we know we do not want to experience what we did this past time. That's best my connection. We're going to try to shore that up where we don't.
But on the rurals, go ahead, Ron. Are you, you, you got more quick? I think me and Ron are in the same boat here. On the rural mowing, on the, what I call roadside mowing. They've only done three, three cycles, correct?
Yes, sir. And it's, it's winter time. They got behind. So I cannot speak tonight. If we collectively made the decision, we only pay them for what they do.
Okay, right.
Just like your urban mowing. So that's why I terminated the urban mowing. It was such an aggravation. Finally, about a week and a half ago, I sent an email saying, that's it. We're not accomplishing anything this morning. To answer your question that you didn't ask, I've been trying to piece me on a real bad road, picking up trash, mowing myself when we get it. Because we've slowed down the other years because we've just slowed down, rain, growing, et cetera. So you only pay for what they do, right? So once the frost hits, et cetera, we stop doing it. I cannot answer. On the urban side, I can answer. The rural, I just stopped on the road, to be honest. But we apply the same practices.
Well, all I know is I don't want to go through another mowing season like we have with this.
Can't. I've answered that question, Ford boss.
Any more commissioner comments?
Good.
Can I get a motion for German?
Some move.
All in favor? All in favor?
Ah.
That's one you won't never get to know.